...you into the position where you only have thirteen members, that you still need eight present. So when you are having a meeting every single night, you can't get eight members. It is not the first time we have been sitting in the basement of Town Hall at eight o'clock at night, phoning around committee members, trying to get one more person so we can actually meet and get through our work. This amendment should be voted down. The subsequent article should be voted yes. Thank you.
I recognize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry, Mr. Ennis. Tom Hurley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Tommy E. M. Precinct Five. The Board of Selectmen are not in favor of the motion to amend either. There are many, many committees in the town that both the moderator appoints, the selectmen appoint a number of committees. Many of those committees are smaller, five and seven-member committees. And in a lot of cases, they are specialized committees, who are either looking for a specialty, an occupational specialty, to study a particular issue, or because it affects a particular area of the community, you know, residents of that community. And sometimes that is very difficult to find, and very difficult to fully fill the entire committee at one time. So, you know, to... I think all the committees should be included within the scope of this article, because if we can't appoint on a small... I think it has more of an impact on a smaller committee than it does on a larger committee. And again, they are difficult to appoint at times. So for that reason, I would respectfully say that it should include all committees.
Ms. King?
Ginny Donahue-King, Precinct Three. From some of the comments that were made, I'm not sure that everybody understands what I proposed. I proposed that we give the Warrant Committee the break, so that if there are only thirteen people that are duly appointed at that time, that their quorum would be seven, not eight. So this is to accommodate the very heavy schedule that the Warrant Committee has. I don't think that we've risen to the level of having to have that same consideration given to the other committees right now, because they don't meet so often. And that is what I was proposing there, is to give the Warrant Committee the break that they need, but to not have to extend that now to other committees. Other than this one that Mrs. Agostino was talking about, and I think there might be some other issues with that committee right now anyway, I don't see the need for that. Thanks.
Well, it's on the amendment. Before we vote, just so everyone's clear, in terms of page seventy-three of the Warrant Committee book, the instances with this amendment, there are five instances where the words "public body" appear, and that's on the third line, the fourth line, the fifth line, and twice on the sixth line. And so those instances of public body would be replaced with Warrant Committee. On the amendment itself... All in favor? I'm sorry. Does the Warrant Committee have a recommendation on this amendment?
Yes, Ted Hayes, Chair of the Warrant Committee. The Warrant Committee does not support this amendment. Thank you.
Any further debate on the amendment? Okay. Let's use my voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, declare that the amendment fails. Now on the main motion. Are there any speakers on that? Yes, I recognize the speaker in front.
Diane Tullio-Agostino, Precinct Nine, and Co-Chair of the Commission on Disability. I would just like to let the body know that when we accepted the bylaw to establish the commission, the requirement is that there be ten meetings a year. And that has not happened for several years. So I have, like I said, I was opposed to this until Friday. And I feel very sad that, you know, what happened Friday did happen, because the Eustace Estate turning into a museum is probably going to be delayed several months. So when you think about what might happen if smaller commissions and boards don't get to meet enough times during a year, it could have, you know, long-term ramifications, putting things off. So I changed my opinion, and I respectfully ask you to support it. Thank you.
Any further debate on the main motion? And the main motion is as read, is printed on page seventy-three of your Warrant Committee book. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I declare the ayes have it by majority vote. Chairman of the Warrant Committee asked me, as I was returning, if we needed a motion to reinstate me as moderator. And I assure you, we do not. The motion that you passed for Town Council to be moderator was for the deliberation of So we are on to Article forty-three, which you will find on page seventy-four of your warrant. And I'm going to read just the recommendation. It's essentially similar to the article, and that's what we'll be voting. Article forty-three is submitted by the Town Government Study Committee. It is recommended that Town vote to authorize the Town moderator to appoint a Town bylaw review committee consisting of five members to review the town's existing general bylaws, with the exception of Chapter Ten, known as the zoning bylaw, Chapter Thirteen, known as the Personnel Administration bylaw, Chapter Fifteen, known as the wetlands bylaw, and Chapter Twenty-One, known as the storm water management bylaw, and to make recommendations, if any, to Town meeting as to additions, deletions, and changes to in organization of such bylaws. Such committee to report annually to the Town's annual report as to its activities and shall expire on the third anniversary of its meeting unless extended by a vote of the Town meeting. This will require a majority vote. And Mr. Neely, Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee, Tommy E. M. Precinct Three. This is the last of our six articles, and I do want to thank all the members of our committee for the service they've put in this year. There's been quite a bit of work done. Thank you. This article generated also from the Department of Revenue report, and I think many of you individually over the years have looked at our bylaws and found them to be complex. They need indexing, they need codification, and this recommendation is asking you to create a bylaws committee, which would be sunset after three years. We've outlined in the article, and there's a series of... It describes certain bylaws that would not be covered by this general bylaws committee, because either they have been recently done, or they are of severe complexity. So we're really looking at the general bylaws and most of the bylaws that you see. And we're asking that this committee be approved by the body here tonight to get to work to help bring our bylaws from the 1930s to the present. So we would ask for your recommendation or your support for this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Again, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, say aye. Oppose, no. To clear, the motion passes with the majority. Warrant to Article forty-four, you'll find that on page seventy-five. To see what sum of money the Town will vote... Excuse me. To see what sum of money the Town will appropriate to the Affordable Housing Trust, determine how set appropriation shall be raised and to act on anything related thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it is recommended that Town appropriate the sum of $5,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust, and that the sum of $5,000 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. This will also require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Earl Fay, Precinct One. I've read the comments with great interest, and I have several questions I'd like to pose with your permission, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First is sort of the obvious. I could not find any information on the fund itself, so I'd like to know how much money is actually in the fund at this point, and how long the fund has, in fact, operated and existed. I'd like to know what the fund has been used for to date. The comments reference a healthy mix of housing stock, and I'd like to know what, in fact, a healthy mix of housing stock is. I'd also like to know who has the authority to make decisions regarding this fund. The comments also reference identifying funding sources, and which body has actually been looking to identify funding sources? And what is the status of that? And has there been any activity in terms of pursuing construction sites, existing buildings, or other property for use as affordable homes? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll recognize... Actually, before I recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I think it's appropriate to share with you, when we read the rules at the beginning of every annual Town meeting, one of the items I cover is that your moderator will attempt to have any question addressed. Sometimes the questions are deep enough that they may not be answered here, so just as an FYI. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Tommy E. M. Precinct Five. The answer to the first question as to how much money the trust currently has, the answer is zero. We're a newly-formed trust. We are a trust, not a committee. We're established under Massachusetts General Law. Town meeting passed the formation of the trust several years ago. The reason that it was established several years ago was when Two Adams Street was proposed, which was originally supposed to have some affordable units in it, and it was determined that would not be feasible to put affordable units in there. They were going to provide us with $50,000 in lieu of the affordable units, and we needed a place to hold that money. Typically, that is an affordable housing trust. The trust, even though it was voted by Town meeting several years ago, was not actually established until this fiscal year. In fact, very, very recently. We've to date had two very short meetings to kind of discuss our formation. There, I believe... I can't remember the exact number of members on the trust. I want to say it's five, and we do have a consultant, an affordable housing consultant, who volunteers her time to the trust. But the trust is autonomous. It doesn't report to Town meeting. If it raises money, it can decide how to spend money, but it has to spend it in accordance with the purpose of the trust, which is to further affordable housing within the Town of Milton. And that is a very broad charge, obviously. You know, depending upon the amount of money we have, we can do very many things to influence developers in the town to build housing that will be consistent with the affordable housing, our affordable housing plan, you know, and consistent with the master plan. So we kind of work with those documents to, again, further affordable housing. A good example of that could be, again, we have no money, so we can't do an awful lot right now. Matter of fact, we can't do anything right now, because we have no money. But a good example, at last Town meeting, when Town meeting was trying to get one more affordable unit on our show property, could the Affordable Housing Trust have maybe purchased another affordable unit? Yes, it could have, if it had the money. So that would give you an idea of what it is and what it does.
Thank you. Sir, did you wish to have a follow-up? You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Earl Fay, Precinct One. I am a little troubled that we've had a trust in place for a few years now without a single dollar having entered the trust. We've raised the question as to affordable housing in the past, and various articles have referenced the fact that if it's under a certain number of units, money would go into this trust, and apparently that has never happened. I believe I was the individual who raised the question, Mr. Hurley, that you referenced, and I was assured by a member of the Board of Selectmen that I'd be pleased this spring Town meeting as to some results of affordable housing, and I unfortunately am not. One of the things is when we have zoning articles, such as one, I don't believe is going to be debated a whole lot, but when it comes to affordable housing, there's usually an example, if we surpass a certain number of houses, then we will have to have a certain number noted as affordable, and the developer would have to, in fact, build them. There is an article coming up where it says, well, perhaps the planning board might decide not to do that, but perhaps we would put money in this trust, and perhaps it would be used. I would respectfully ask the planning board in all future articles to strike that. Let's actually build something when there's an opportunity to build it. Okay? Let's please do that. And it's hard for me to understand the comment to talk about a robust, robust affordable housing trust that has zero dollars in it, and a robust fund that we will, in a hundred-million-dollar budget, we're going to put $5,000. We're talking about a few doors and a couple of windows for $5,000. So it's hard for me to understand the word "robust," and it's also hard for me to understand how that is considered a modest donation in the context of a hundred-million-dollar So although there is no reporting requirements, as I understand it from the Board of Selectmen, to echo Mr. Morash, I would like some transparency with regards to this affordable housing trust, particularly since many articles do reference the existence of such a trust. So I would ask, respectfully ask, that if there are members here, if the Board of Selectmen could please ask the members of that trust to perhaps report to Town meeting in the fall, particularly since the fall Town meeting does focus on such articles that reference the fund. So if it would be possible to politely request that there be some sort of presentation to Town meeting as to if anything has occurred, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And clearly, it's in the best interest of the trust where it does want to, you know, does want to further affordable housing stock within the community, to work with the community, to work with the Town, in fact, to work with the planning board, and, you know, other departments within the Town, as well as Town meeting. The goal is furtherance. The law doesn't require us. The law says, you know, we're basically, you know, self-supporting, self-serving, and, you know, are an entity unto ourselves. In fact, once we do have money and expend money, we're required to have separate audited financial statements that are public. All our meetings are public. So, you know, so we are a public body, but, you know, similar to... Like I said, we're a trust. Very similar to, you know, the Governor Stotan trust. That's a trust. You know, we think of it as part of the Town, but it's really not part of the Town. It's a separate trust. This is as well. It's just established by the Town, but separate. In terms of the amount of money, you know, we think that the trust will grow, you know, more and more. The, you know, the planning board is putting articles forth that would, you know, call for both payments in lieu of affordable units, which would fund the trust. We can certainly try and do some fundraising. Most communities that have affordable housing trusts, the lion's share of that money comes from community preservation, which we tried unsuccessfully to pass a couple of years ago. But that is the prime driving force behind most affordable housing trusts. So again, the Board of Selectmen did put forth this article originally requesting $500,000. We didn't think we'd actually get $500,000, but hoped we'd get something substantial. We didn't plan on eight feet of snow this year, and that certainly took a dent out of it.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Again, it will require a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion is passed. Article forty-five, which is the fourth to the last article. I'm going to read just the recommendation, which you will find at the bottom of page seventy-five. It's submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It is recommended that Town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and One Half of the Massachusetts General Laws, which would authorize the Town to establish a separate account classified as the Yule and Rink Operations Enterprise Fund, provided that such acceptance shall be effective on July 1st, 2015. This will require a majority vote, and I recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Tommy E. M. Precinct Five. Mr. Chairman, if you'd please indulge me, just before I speak to this article, because probably is the last time I'm going to get to speak, I'd just like to recognize the Warrant Committee. The Selectmen usually get beat out at the end of Town meeting, so they work really, really hard. Believe me, I know it. I've been on there. We've got several chairs. Thank you very much, guys. Okay, now let's hope we can get out of here early. This article is hopefully pretty straightforward, but probably requires a little bit of explanation. We've been trying for quite a while now to obtain a 25-year lease to operate Yule and Rink. We've been operating under a five-year permit, which is very restrictive, in that you, you know, it's hard if you're only going to have the rink for five years to do any kind of capital improvement plan, when you don't know if you're going to have it for more than those five years. You know, it's hard to get a good management plan in place. So we have been trying, and I don't want to say we've been going to run around, but it's been a difficult road dealing with DCR and DCAM, who has to really, in the final analysis, grant the lease. I just want to say, thanks to Representative Walter Timmeltie, who got us a meeting before with Secretary of Environmental Affairs Beaton. We had a great meeting, I think about a week ago, and we also did have representatives of the Friends of Yule and Rink at that meeting, and I believe that the environment right now is supportive of the Town getting that 25-year lease. Now, if we do get a 25-year lease, we have to figure out a way to make sure that it is revenue-neutral to the Town. We can't ask Town meeting to approve appropriations out of the general fund to run the rink. I mean, there's just clearly not enough money to do that. The reason this article is set forth is if we do get the lease, and we believe we will, is the revolving... I mean, the Enterprise Fund is a mechanism that would require it be a self-supporting fund, that we would have to set rates sufficient to cover debt service, to cover operating expenses, and to build capital reserves. So that is the reason for the article. And again, we are about to form a capital... Our 25-year lease committee, and that committee will consist of a member of the Park Department, a member of the Board of Selectmen, a representative of Curry, only because they have institutional knowledge of the rink, a member of the Friends of Yule and Rink, and a representative of Milton Youth Hockey and Commonwealth Skating. So I might have left somebody out, but we want a good, diverse group to basically map out how that the provisions of that 25-year lease study a, you know, a capital plan, a long-term capital plan, and make determinations on how the rink is going to be managed, how it's going to be operated, and who's going to maintain the facilities. So that's the goal, and this is really just a holding place for right now. If we get it, we have a place to put it. If we don't get it, we'll probably be back asking you to disband the Enterprise Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
I was just... Henry Carr, Precinct Ten. I was just curious, I know Curry has been sort of managing it. What's the story on that? Is it... Are they or the Town going to manage it?
Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, Curry's been managing it for the last five years under a management contract. Part of that contract is to provide... Because the Town had no mechanism when we acquired the operating permit five years ago, of, you know, how it was going to run the rink and make sure that we didn't have to absorb operating losses. That rink was losing over $300,000 a year under DCR. It's down to not break an even, but at least not losing as much at this point. Curry guaranteed to absorb approximately $500,000 of those operating losses over a period of time. So they have been doing that. We obviously can't ask Curry to absorb operating losses for 25 years. Wouldn't be fair to Curry, and quite frankly, they'd probably be crazy if they said they'd do it. So we need another mechanism. You know, whether Curry is the manager of the rink, you know, I mean, somebody's going to have to manage the rink. Somebody's got to run it on a day-to-day basis. We would like the Park Department to set policy on the rink, because it is a recreation facility. It really shouldn't be under the control of the Board of Selectmen, which it has been for the past five years. So the idea would be to transfer it over to the Park Department, you know, from a policy and program standpoint. But then somebody's got to run the facility, somebody's got to maintain the facility, and, you know, realistically, that's probably not the Park Department itself. So we may go out... And again, that's what the committee is there to decide. Do you go out for a management company to actually do the operation of management? Do we use consolidated facilities to maintain the facility? You know, how is it going to work? We don't actually know yet. That's what the committee's for.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Again, it will require a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. All right, folks, as we go into Article forty-five, a Town meeting member called my attention earlier this evening, and I forgot to share it with you. But in the sign-in sheets that the clerk puts out for the end of the alphabet, right up here to my left, your right, somebody left a set of keys, I think they're to a catalog. You need not come up now, but if you're missing keys, then I'd ask you to check. You can come up and get them at the end of the meeting, if you like. Article forty-five. Excuse me. Forty-six, folks, I'm going to read the recommendation only, which begins on the top of page seventy-seven. It is recommended that Town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to enact legislation in substantially the following form, provided that the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. In act, authorizing the Town of Milton to issue an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises of a certain restaurant, being enacted by the Senate and the House of Representatives and General Court assembled, and by authority of the same as follows. Section one. Notwithstanding the provisions of Sections Eleven and Seventeen of Chapter One Thirty-eight of the General Laws, the licensing authority of the Town of Milton may grant an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises of a restaurant known as The Plate at Milton Marketplace, located on the second floor of Ten Bassett Street and owned by Lombardi Enterprises LLC, our successor in interest, provided that any successor in interest shall be subject to approval by the Milton Board of Selectmen and the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. Provided, however, that an application to transfer the license to a successor in interest shall be granted and approved according to the standard for a new license, and provided further that all procedures set forth under Section Fifteen A of Chapter One Thirty-eight shall be applicable thereto. The license shall be subject to all of said Chapter One Thirty-eight, except said Section Seventeen. The licensing authority shall not approve the transfer of the license to any other location. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Hello, Milton neighbors. My name is Melissa Fassel Dunn, and I'm a rookie Town Meeting Member from Precinct Seven. Really happy to be here.
Welcome.
I also chair the Communications Committee of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, and I abut the abutters of the Fruit Center. We had a meeting with the Plate owner, Susan Lombardi, a couple of weeks ago regarding the new restaurant. And one of the reasons my neighbors and I live in the squares is to experience the many locally-owned businesses. We frequent Abbey Park, and we look forward to the opening of the new Italian restaurant, as well as The Plate. So Susan has graciously treated us already to some of her goodies at our meetings, and we all look forward to more. My neighbors and I initially had some concerns about the restaurant, especially with respect to the liquor license. This means two new liquor licenses in the square. We already have Abbey Park, we're going to be adding the one for the new Italian restaurant, and now The Plate. So this area is already very congested with a lot of traffic, a lot of cut-through traffic, and there are tons of children in the area, three of them mine. We want to make sure we keep the area as safe as possible. We all love our liquor, but we'd like to be careful. So the Plate owner has already eased some of our concerns in our neighborhood meetings, and she talked about the general atmosphere of the restaurant. She said that it was going to be really a place where you enjoy a beer or a cocktail with your dinner. It's not a bar, it will be limited to forty-two seats, have no physical bar, and it will close at nine o'clock. So this really put us all at ease. It's not going to be, you know, a hangout place where people are there until two in the morning, boozing it up. So that we can all sleep a little bit better, we would like to propose that these assurances of the forty-two seats, the no physical bar, and closing at nine P.M. be added to this article via a friendly amendment.
Okay, so the member has made a motion to amend. I'd like to read that motion to amend and point you in particular to exactly where it's located. So we are talking about, I'm just going to find it exactly. So we're talking about, if you look down to four lines from the bottom of that large section-one paragraph, you will see the phrase, "Section fifteen A of chapter one thirty-eight shall be applicable thereto." You all with me? The member is, wants the following verbiage added directly after that. And provided furthermore, that without limiting the authority of the town of Milton or the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission to impose any other terms and conditions on the granting or transfer of said license under applicable law, said license shall be limited to, A, not more than forty-two seats at said location; B, service of such alcoholic beverages shall not be permitted at any stand-up bar, but shall instead be limited only to serving, service at a, at freestanding tables located therein; and C, the sale or consumption of any such alcoholic beverages shall not be permitted after nine P.M. in the evening. The member further wants to add the next sentence in your warrant, begins with the term "the license", directly after the word "license", wants added "if granted", and then at the very end, where it says "transfer of the license", to again add "if granted". So that motion has been made and seconded, excuse me, it's been made, has it been seconded? It's been made and seconded, and if you'll allow the moderator a minute, I just want to clarify something. So, folks, I want to make sure that it's not only in scope, but we're talking about, I want to clarify that it's not only within scope, but when we're talking about licenses and the Alcohol Control Commission and the Board of Selectmen acting in another capacity, I want to make sure that we won't have any legal issue with this as well. So if you give me just a minute. So ma'am, I've discussed this at length with Town Council and the Board of Selectmen, who acts as the authority in negotiating these with any recipient. And I'm going to have to rule this out of order for here, okay? And the reason, there's many reasons, but probably the most prominent one is, this vote would, is an authorization of an act to go to the legislature. And this provides much more detail. If they're going to start considering, do they have to act upon, gee, does it make sense for that restaurant to have forty-two seats, or some of the other restrictions? It's way too restrictive for the legislature to probably consider. It probably would, would send this whole article to defeat the legislature without of order detail. There are some other concerns also, but I, but I think that's enough. Now, notwithstanding, I would recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to address the issues that you raised. There is one other point I do want to make, too. This, this will end up giving a license to the establishment, and, for example, a subsequent owner, if we were to vote this in, and it were to be passed by the legislature, highly doubtful, then a subsequent owner would have to worry about, is forty-two seats make the most sense? They might not have the same configuration as the current owner who's comfortable with the forty-two seats. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Yeah, we hear the residents' concerns, and most of these concerns are within the special permit that was issued to operate it, in terms of the size of the restaurant. I'm not sure if it limits it to forty-two seats or not, but it certainly is a hard close at nine o'clock. That being said, there will be a public hearing process when the license is issued, and that's probably the proper point to attempt to get restrictive language within the license that's issued itself. And the Board of Selectmen will clearly listen to those concerns and would, would, you know, clearly be, again, willing to debate whether it should or shouldn't be. But at least if it's done at that level, we can restrict forty-two seats if we wanted it. We can restrict the, you know, a hard, hard nine o'clock close right within the license. If conditions change over the years, then changing it, you know, again, would be a public hearing process. We would listen to everybody. But if everybody's in agreement that it should perhaps now be changed because of a configuration change of some kind, then we can act on it quickly, as opposed to tying the hands of the operator at the time, having to wait another year to go back to the state to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Dunn, I have to tell you, as a new Town Meeting Member, how grateful I am that you provided this with great clarity, color-coded. And I take no particular pleasure, as a result of that, of ruling it out of order. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. And I'm just curious if, right now, the point, the approval process goes through the Board of Selectmen for the liquor license, if this gets approved? Will that still be the case, or will that go to the Strong Town Administrator?
Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Specifically, all licenses have to be, even under the Strong Town Administrator, would have to be approved, but especially the liquor license would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? I'd remind you, it takes a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. Oppose, no. The motion passes with a majority. We have two articles left, and before we get into those, I'm going to recognize the Chair of our Planning Board, Emily Innis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Emily Keys Innis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, Chairman of the Planning Board. With the permission of the moderator, I have a few announcements on the behalf of the Planning Board, and then I'm going to address both Articles forty-seven and forty-eight at the same time. This is all I have. On behalf of the Planning Board, I would like to thank Eddie Duffy for his years of service on the Planning Board. Eddie served three terms, that is fifteen years, on the board. He always kept the best interests of abutters, residents, and the town of Milton as a whole at heart when making his decisions. I would also like to welcome our newest member of the board, Cheryl Tagheas. She is a talented and award-winning architect, and has also served on the warrant committee. We look forward to her contributions to the work of the Planning Board. Alex Whiteside has served the Planning Board as Chair for the last three years, and I would like to extend the board's thanks for his work over that period. This board has been exceptionally busy during that period, and Alex has put significant time into managing the board's duties. We are saying goodbye to our clerk, Emily Martin. The Board of Selectmen poached, I mean, hired her for their office, and we look forward to working with her in her new capacity. On behalf of the board, I would also like to thank the warrant committee, the Board of Selectmen, and most of all, Town Meeting for their support last spring in adding an assistant planner to the Planning Department. Tim Siewinski has joined us. And he has already been contributing to the work of the board. His workload is about to increase significantly with the number of special permit applications and zoning changes the board is contemplating as a result of the almost-completed master plan process. The master plan will be brought to the board for a vote at the end of this month, and we will work with the Board of Selectmen to appoint the implementation committee that Town Meeting approved last fall. Onto the Articles. Articles forty-seven and forty-eight were submitted by citizens and not by the Planning Board. The Planning Board held public hearings on both Articles. The hearing for Article forty-eight lasted several nights. As a result of those hearings and discussion by the board, after consultation with both the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen, we are in agreement with the revised recommendation of the warrant committee given to you last Thursday night. We ask that you refer the subject of Article forty-seven to the Planning Board for further study, and that you vote no on Article forty-eight. Cheryl Tagheas noted at one of our meetings that citizens submit zoning articles out of a sense of frustration. The Planning Board recognizes that frustration, and we will address the subject matter of both Articles. We will begin an extensive public process this June that will take us to the October 2015 Town Meeting. At this first meeting, we will present the zoning articles we are considering for October, including revisions to the signed bylaws and the possibility of adding condominium development to Milton. We will seek public input on the Articles we are considering and use that input to both narrow our list and inform the draft language. In July and August, we will present draft language and seat public comment, both at scheduled public workshops and during a public comment period, which will allow people to submit their thoughts in writing. In September, we will hold the formal public hearing on the final language of the Articles we will present in October. We will publicize these workshops through the media and through Town Clerk Suvison Galvin's excellent email list. I urge you all to sign up. For the subject of Article forty-seven, the revisions to the signed bylaw, we will appoint a committee that includes members of the Sign Review Committee, a citizen representative, and a member of the Board of Selectmen or its designee. One of the citizens, one of the signatories to the citizen's article has indicated an interest in being that representative on this committee. Our intent is to present an article addressing the illumination of signs at the October 2015 Town Meeting. We will also consider revisions to the regulations to address technologies for the design, construction, and illumination of signs. For the subject of Article forty-eight, the condominium bylaw, the Planning Board will continue to work with its condominium working group and with the neighborhood groups that have indicated an interest in this article. We are considering two approaches to condominiums, one that would apply to large estates and give bonuses for the protection of historic homes and environmental assets. The second approach would apply to parcels near transit and our commercial areas. We ask that this Town Meeting support the recommendations for both Articles forty-seven and forty-eight, and we look forward to working with all of you over the next few months to prepare for our meeting in October. And, Mr. Moderator, when it's appropriate, I would like to move that we waive the reading of Article forty-eight.
That's, that's perfectly fine. Frankly, the waiving of the reading of the article is never really especially a concern of the Town Meeting members. The motion always before you is the recommendation, and sometimes the recommendation is a lengthy, and some of the members would prefer I waive the reading of that. In this case, the recommendation is rather brief, and so I will be reading the recommendation. But before we move to that, Ms. Innis, I just, for clarity, I would like you to address that, in fact, the ten sign, the, the, the folks that submitted this motion are in support of the revised recommendation supported by the warrant committee. Yes or no?
For Article forty-seven, the first signatory met with us at our last meeting. The people, she represented that they were not happy, as happy about the moratorium, moratorium being removed, but I believe the Board of Selectmen may be addressing being removed, but I believe the Board of Selectmen may be addressing that. We had a conversation the other night, and when I reported what the Board of Selectmen would do, she would be willing to do that. The, for Article 48, one of the signatories appeared at our public hearing. They have not since reached out to us with either a yes or a no on our final recommendation, but they were certainly present during at least one and maybe all three nights of the public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I know I said I wasn't going to get up and speak a couple articles ago, I guess I lied. But the, the Board of Selectmen have agreed that during this, this period, until we do get new signed bylaws, that if we are to meet on any, any sign within the business district, especially signs that would require lighting, that we will have a, a public hearing on them. We will give two weeks' notice, and we will involve the Planning Board within that hearing.
Thank you. So the recommendation before you, which is supported by the warrant committee for Article 47, it is recommend the town, oh, and by the way, this is on a blue sheet, if you had a blue sheet from the other night. It is recommend the town refer the subject matter of this article to the Planning Board for further study, submitting a new article to or reporting thereon at the 2015 Fall Town Meeting. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes with the majority. Article 48, as you will see, Article 48, the article itself goes for several pages. You are always voting the recommendation of the warrant committee. The recommendation of the warrant committee has passed out the revised recommendation you'll find on this sheet of paper, and given the discussion, I think appropriate, just to read that recommendation for Article 48, and it's supported by the warrant committee, the Planning Board, and the Board of Selectmen, is it recommended that the town vote no? Does anyone wish to speak to that motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Tim Kernan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10, member of the Condominium Bylaw Committee, and also a representative with the Neighborhood Coalition. This bylaw is not the condominium bylaw that the town is looking for, and I recommend that we support the warrant committee's recommendation to turn it down. The Condominium Bylaw Committee has reviewed several proposed condominium bylaws, and had a very robust and healthy conversation about condominiums in Milton. I think the committee understands the issues that are involved, and this bylaw does not adequately protect the town, nor does it give the town what it really wants. The neighborhood associations coalesced and grouped around a no vote on this article, and we worked very closely with the Planning Board and the warrant committee, and, and this town should be very pleased with the cooperative efforts of both those bodies. We had tremendous, productive, solid, good conversations with both of those boards and committees, and we all came to, to the agreement that a no vote on this article, or an agreement with the warrant committee, I should say, is the way to go. So please, support the warrant committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak to this recommendation, which, again, it's recommend that the town vote no? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The recommendation passes with the majority. Thank you for your attendance through the four nights. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
It's in mood, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.